Okay.
All right, good. So we'll bring to order the Berlin School Committee meeting of December 14th. And we're working on the approval of payroll and payable warrants, looking them over. The consent agenda includes the November 3rd open session meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second? Does anybody have anything that concerns them about minutes?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor of approving the number 3rd minute, say aye.
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 I said aye.
Okay.
Be more vocal.
Okay. All right, motion passes. Communications, we have a communication from the bicentennial committee. Asking to use the school fields parking and cafeteria gym on Sunday, June 10th of 2012. And I believe that's all taken care of?
If you approve it.
Approve it, or just acknowledge the letter?
Or give permission to use the public grounds, use the school site.
Do you want a motion for that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to allow the bicentennial committee to use the school fields parking cafeteria gym on Sunday, June 10th of 2012? Go ahead. Go ahead. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We also have in your packets, a letter from Nikki Sangus. Member of Congress, this is back November 16th, when it was American Education Week. And she's given us some idea of the things that she stands behind. And appreciates the opportunity to communicate with us during this notable week, which unfortunately is over. And to contact her if you have any questions or thoughts about the No Child Left Behind. Am I missing anything?
No.
I think that was about it.
I need some sort of...
Okay. Petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the reports. The CPAC report? Do we have a CPAC report? Okay.
Been a while since I've been here. So my report's going to go back to fall. In October, the Federation for Special Needs came and gave a presentation on suspension and discipline. Our pie fundraiser that we had last fall was very successful. We raised over a thousand dollars, which I thought was fabulous. CPAC representatives were at the preschool information nights at both the elementary schools in November. And we presented information about CPAC for those parents. National Inclusive Schools Week is this week. And again, this year, we're having a poster contest for grades kindergarten to third grade, and essay contests for students in grades four through six. And a cartoon contest, or cartoon, where they can draw, cartoon, for the middle and high school students at Tohonto. The theme is appreciating diversity moves us all forward. So we didn't have any submissions this year at Berlin Memorial. Oilstone Elementary has eight, and I don't think we have any at Tohonto. So we'll be displaying those at the school. That's nice for the kids to participate in that. And as part of our National Inclusive Schools Week, last week, we showed the movie Including Samuel. And Dr. DeBul was one of our guests that night. So we watched the movie and had a nice discussion afterwards.
Great popcorn.
Yeah. And we had popcorn and snacks.
But it was a great movie. It was a really impactful movie.
It was, it was a very good movie.
Yep, very well done.
Very nice. We had a good discussion afterwards. We're done until the end of January, when Dr. DeBul will be coming to visit us again for a meeting.
My pleasure.
That we didn't get to have in September. If parents are interested in coming to our January meeting, Dr. DeBul will be there.
Great, thank you.
Just remind everybody, it's not a roast, it's just a...
When I went to the suspension and discipline seminar that you put on, and that was fabulous. You guys, that was so informative. There was really a lot of information I couldn't believe, all the information there was to go through, two rules. So that was really great and informative.
Yeah, it was very informative, she was very good.
Great, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. A lot of these items we've discussed at the region, but for the audience in Berlin, I'll kind of review them very briefly again. As you can see, as far as the superintendent search update is concerned, you have in your packets this evening, the superintendent search timeline. We expect to advertise December 18th, we'll advertise in monsta.com. Master Association of School Superintendents website, Master Association of School Committee website, School Spring, and the what's the Sunday Telegram. We already have, some of this is out because obviously it's through electronic media, and we actually have a couple inquiries already. So I hope that bodes very, very well. And as you can see, the school committee is charged with setting up a screening committee sometime between December 18th and January 9th. And then we hope to, applications will close on February 3rd. And then from then on, we will begin screenings and working with the screening committee to beginning interview candidates. So for presentation finalists to the school committee. And when all is said and done, hopefully be able to wrap this up sometime at the end of March. And hopefully have someone that can come onboard and start around or about July 1, 2012, depending upon the type of contracts that they have. As we indicated before, this is a proposed schedule, can be altered by the school committee. Or in the case of the semifinal screening committee by the superintendent due to any logistical issues we may have. Also, in our advertisements, the school committee does reserve the right to terminate the search process at any time if they feel the quality of the available candidates is not satisfactory, and they do not have the skill sets required to meet the needs of the multiple school districts. So we're off and running this weekend. And anyone that wants to see the complete qualifications and the advertisement in its totality can visit us on the website. Just click on superintendent search, and everything is there, all the materials are there. So we're on our way, as far as that's concerned. We hope to have some good candidates coming in.
Can I ask a question? I just wondered if we are, are we still planning to simultaneously check with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about the waiver?
I think, well Ruth's been charged by both committees to do that, to talk with, I think it's Trish Federico, if I remember correctly. She's a very difficult person to get a hold of.
She is, learning that quite quickly.
Yeah, and I think we know what the response to that query is going to be anyhow. And I think the response to that query is going to be that you will advertise the position. Once again, if only given three waivers in the history of the Commonwealth, successive waivers for this without school districts going out and I guess doing due diligence to get a, to see what's out there in terms of the quality of the candidates, you know, to fulfill the position. If nothing else, I mean, we have talked with Ms. Blandon, and we've talked about maybe we might establish contact with Mrs. Federico. If nothing else, to establish contact with her, a relationship with her, and to explain what the needs of the district are in case the, we cannot find a suitable applicants or candidates for the position that the multiple school committees are satisfied with.
Okay, that's good to hear. Keep us posted. Okay.
I'm sorry, is that?
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. You have in front of you a two-week building committee update projection about where we are in terms of school construction. I did go down this Tuesday morning to meet with the people at the trailer. Who is our OPM, and who is on-site to make sure that things are, acting behalf of the district, things are going correctly. And of course, the CTA construction crew and the architects. And then we are on schedule and on time, and we are pretty much right on budget. So we're very happy, and what you have is a two-week look ahead on everything that's going on. I won't go through the mall, because this must be 65, 75 things on this spreadsheet that we have in front of you. But the big thing now is to get heat into the buildings, which is being done this week, so they can begin to work on drywall, and putting up walls, and floors, and things that they need to do. So it's actually starting to take good shape. And I believe they will probably have a couple of days where they'll have tours for interested members, if they, school committee members, if you'd like to go in and actually take a walk around, see what's up so far. So some places all you see is steel girders and beams, and other places you start to see much more of a finished product. So coming along nicely, and we're glad to say that so far, things are progressing unwell. We've had good weather, except for a few days in October, but things have gone well. School calendar projections, this is once again, right now, we're projecting that the last day of school for Berlin Memorial will be on June 21st. And that's of course, we'll see what happens with the rest of the winter. But right now, that's the adjusted last day of school. So far, we've used four days for Berlin Elementary. And hopefully, we have other days to play with for the year to go along, and hopefully we'll continue to have a mild winter, or if it's going to snow, let it snow during Christmas Vacation Week, or the day before Christmas, or anytime we're not in session would be nice. So, but we'll cross those other bridges when we come to them, depending upon how the winter goes along. We'll just monitor it as the year unfolds. And I've given you those adjusted calendars. But I think, we won't have any, really, I think, too much more discussion about this till maybe we get around February, unless something of real major significance happens. The school budget, which I think we're going to spend quite a bit of time on at this point in time. And once again, the Board of Selectmen have graciously allowed us to give us an extension for our budget submission until January 17th, which we want to take full advantage of. We are going to submit a budget to the, my intent, with the permission of the school committee, I should say, is to submit a budget to the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee, and the Advisory Board, to the Finance Committee, and anyone else that would like it, to them, on that date. And hopefully, it will be a, not hopefully, it will be a budget that has substance to it. So what I'd like to do is go over that budget tonight with the assistance of Ms. Courtney Keegan, our Director of Financial Services, Ms. Carol Bradley, the School Building Principal, and Judy Valencourt, our Director of People's Services. So if we could do that, I would like to, you can do that this evening. This is the preliminary school budget for the Berlin Elementary School. And as we discussed, this is a preliminary budget, since we do not have any figures for any of the major line items that would significantly affect the budget, like Chapter 70 allocations, circuit breaker levels, charter and school choice charges on the school side, other major line items on the municipal side, such as local aid to cities and towns, lottery funds, and various other charges and aid from the Commonwealth. Usually, these numbers are not forthcoming until March or later, even though they're mandated by law to be done at that time. The legislature sometimes does things as they wish, even though we have to abide by our mandates. This year, we presented to you something a little bit different. You have the complete, complete line item by item budget that provides for total transparencies for any items that you would like to discuss. Or later on, the FinCom, or the Advisory Board to the FinCom, or Board of Selectmen, or actually anyone within the town of Berlin would like to discuss. You have it line by line. So it's a total transparency. And what you have in here is the actual budgets from 2010 and 11. You have the 2012 budget, you have the requested budget for 2013. We've given you a column on variance, which means how much those line items have gone up, or gone down, or remain the same. And we also have a column that we put in, it's called mandates. And if you see that column, you see mandate next, what that means, that is required by either the state or the federal government for us to provide. I think that's very interesting information, you'll see at the end, how much of this budget is mandated by state and federal regulation that we have absolutely no control over at all. So right now, mandates basically account for a little over 29% of the budget, as it stands at this point in time, which is somewhat staggering. Last year, the Berlin Elementary budget, as you know, was level funded at FY11 levels. In addition, Berlin Elementary eliminated three full-time special education paraprofessionals. And also reduced the central office staff, in conjunction with, of course, the other two school districts, by one full-time curriculum coordinator and a 0.75 FTE technology coordinator, who has assumed many of the duties as the Dean of Students at the Tohonto Regional High School. Some of the areas which we impact this year are, we will lose the EdJobs program. In fact, we've lost the EdJobs program, which is part of the stimulus package, that's gone. And we have to transfer personnel to the local budget in the amounts of $25,502, which is a remedial tutoring position, and $3,303, which is the tutor enrichment position, if we wish to maintain those personnel and those programs for the next operating year. Inflation, though low, still low, is low over the years, still has to be factored in as cost of rise. Even though inflation is operating around, oh, 1.3, about 1.3%, I mean, it varies all over the place, but still, over a three-year period, it comes up to be almost to 3.5%, 4%. And you lose that buying power over a three-year period. Heating oil has risen dramatically this year, it's up to $3.21 a gallon. Even though we purchased this through a collaborative bidding process, and this is a bid that we just received about a week, week and a half ago or so. So it's new, I mean, it's fresh, as we speak, and this is the bid that we'll be using. And it's through a major collaborative bidding process. Any negotiated salaries that the school committee has completed at this point in time are also included in this budget. A part-time accounts payable receivable clerk at 19 and a half hours, which is of course prorated between the three school districts at $4,875, is included in this budget. The allocated salary for the position of the new superintendent of schools, we have a range, as you know, of up to $135,000. Doesn't necessarily mean that the joint committees will pay that, but that is your advertised range, and of course, we have to budget for that in case that comes to fruition. That is also in this budget, of course, you know, prorated according to the percentages allocated by the three school districts, the three unions. We have in this budget, transfer of grant-funded positions, primarily in special education to the general budget, the Special Education 240 grant. That helps us to reduce our retirement cost of the state of approximately 9%. Basically gives us a much bigger bang for a buck, more purchasing power. So you'll see that reflected in this budget, too. And that also is the reallocation of special education tuitions out of this budget, okay, to the 240 special education grant. So you'll see that as a reflection on these line items, which we will proceed to go through with you. The final budget figures on the last page indicate the application of $200,000 from the school choice account to the budget. As you know, school choice funds are intended to be applied to the support of education in the Berlin Elementary Schools for accepting students under the school choice program. It's not intended to be a surplus fund, or a piggy bank, unquote, which accumulates over time. And in fact, this year, Ms. Keegan has notified me that she has learned that the state has indicated that they will begin auditing school choice fund accounts to investigate accumulation of funds what they consider to be beyond a reasonable expectation. So there are some cities and towns that have been accumulating huge amounts in this particular area. School choice funds, you know, cannot be expended on infrastructure of buildings. Final budget also includes a reduction of one teaching position due to student enrollment, if you so wish to do that, okay? This budget doesn't include it, but it's something that I've given to you, that is something that you can continue to reduce the budget by. And I give you some targeted amounts that you can use, also some targeted amounts that you have in my notes regarding additional application of school choice to reduce things down to lower percentage figures, and this is something that the committee can think about. I mean, in terms of where you want to go with the budget, what kind of budget you want to present to the Board of Selectmen. Once again, I want to reemphasize, it's a preliminary budget, which we need to discuss and vote prior to January 17th for submission to the town of Berlin. Of course, anytime between January 17th and 48 hours before town meeting, you can vote the budget anyway, whatever you'd like to do. I mean, as long as you have an official posted meeting, you can certainly change this budget. And I'm sure that we will get involved in a lengthy budget discussion. I expect we're going to revisit this budget in partnership with town officials as we progress through the fiscal year. So perhaps we can review the budget, line item by line item, is that what you'd like to do?
Was that?
Yes?
Fine with you? Sounds good to me.
Want to do that? Okay. Okay, I thought I'd go through and we'll just highlight, and Carol, Judy, and Courtney, if I miss anything, or if I say anything wrong, don't be afraid to correct me, okay?
Mike?
Yes.
I don't know if you misspoke, but I just wanted to clarify, when you said, I think you said 2010 actual budget, but that's actual spending, is that correct?
Yes, this is spending in 2010 and 11.
That's what you said.
10 and 11 is what you spent.
Yes, you are quite correct.
Clarify, okay, thank you.
So you can see at the top line, just for the sake of explanation, that you have a school committee member's salary. It's been $900 since 2010, it hasn't changed at all, and same with the budget.
It's been that amount forever.
Okay, well, we're not going to go back beyond 2010.
I just thought I'd let you know.
Just for illustration, you can see that the variance is zero, and we didn't put a mandate in there. So I think the first one that you see that is of significance, and if you go in the right-hand column of all these numbers, you've got about 15 numbers there on the left-hand side. But if you look at the right-hand side, and we go down to 112, that's school committee other, I'm sorry, school 113. School committee superintendent salary, you'll see that there is a variance in there of about $2,850. And that is where you see the $135,000 prorated for the superintendent salary among the three districts. So that's what that increase is about. Further, the, and you'll see some things in here, such as an increase under, let's say, 117, which went up $275 for advertising. That's obviously for advertising for the superintendent's position, that went up. And you'll see some other increases, I'm not focusing on every single one of them that are, I don't want to say trivial, because they do all add up. But I mean, I'm focusing on the high points of the budget that's in here. Let's see. A major one would be the 132, and that's the finance business administrative aid salary. That's a position that I had talked about before, prorated between the three school districts, and that's like $4,875. And that's like, again, a correlation of what we're assuming will be a budget of $19,500 at 25%, a total of 19.5 hours a week. Once again, prorated between the three districts.
Is that something in the near future? I assume that one of the meetings, or all the meetings, will be getting like a description, job description.
Yes, yeah. As you know, we're pressed to get these budgets.
Absolutely.
Out. So we don't have everything developed now, but, you know, like, so you have, and you have to take no action tonight on this budget at all. This is just exploratory, you can see it, digest it, you can email myself, or Courtney, or Judy, or Carol, with questions that you may have regarding the budget. If you talk about it, then at the next meeting, I think, is it January 4th, or, I can look it up in my book.
11th meeting.
11th, thank you very much. At that meeting, we should have more of a discussion, and then at that point in time, make a motion to vote to approve a budget that could be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen.
Is there a budget hearing also?
Budget hearing would not take place till later on. Yes, it's required by law, it's mandated by law, it has to be posted in the papers, it has to be legal posting. And that would occur generally after some discussions occurred with the FinCom, with the school committee, when the committee feels as though they're pretty much honed in on, okay, this is the budget. And at that point in time, when they feel that that's pretty much the budget, then they have to post an open hearing on that budget, just to have a, I mean, they'll be discussing the budget every meeting, I'm sure, but for a full-blown discussion on the budget before it's voted to be the final budget that we present on the town floor, or at least present to the Board of Selectmen. And then we'll see what happens on the town floor. That generally occurs later on in the process.
Will it be done in conjunction with the February school committee meeting, or will it just do that first, and then have a school committee?
Well, I mean, it's really up to the chair, I don't want to speak for the chair.
We have actually been doing it at a school committee meeting in the past, so probably we'd just spend, you know, most of a school committee meeting, having the budget hearing.
I can tell you how I've done it in the past, and I'm sure I'll follow whatever precedent you've set here. Generally speaking, in the past, a lot of times, you've set the budget hearing on the same date as a school committee meeting. But it is a separate meeting. So you may start that meeting at 6 o'clock, I mean, I'm just picking a time out of the blue. For a budget hearing, you may allocate an hour for the budget hearing, and that hearing is nothing devoted, nothing except to the budget.
Right.
Okay, and questions and answers from the audience. And then at the end of that, that's when you would have that budget hearing and vote your budget through. And then after that, generally, you proceed with your regular posted school committee meeting. But you can do it any way you want, you can have a separate night, separate meeting, I mean, it's really up to you.
Probably a little further date, we'll figure it out, but it'll most likely be the same night, we'll figure out the time.
Well, until you get the numbers from the state, the big numbers on Chapter 70, and the town gets their numbers on local aid. I mean, having a budget discussion is almost fruitless. I mean, until you get those numbers in, you just don't know what you're dealing with.
Right.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I was trying to plan ahead, you know, ideally, you could do back-to-back school committee.
Are you going on vacation at any time?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. Let's see, another major one, I'm on page 2 of 8, and I'm looking down at line number 146, district-wide technical coordinator salary. You can see that there's a major variance in there, an increase of $11,745. That is, basically, we had talked at the region, and the presentation you had received from Diane Tisari and Paul Mara about how things were going with splitting out the technology coordinator, and the dean of students, and how that model is going, which is going okay this year, it's working out this year, but next year will be really problematic. You know, particularly when we get into moving into the new high school, and of course, they have the sixth grade coming up. So I have prorated out that salary, I've put it in here, and that's what will be up for discussion, I'm sure, between all the three school committees now, in the future.
And it's really just going back to just about what it was previous to this last, to this year.
Absolutely correct.
That's correct.
Absolutely correct. As you can see, you begin to get into at the bottom, like, line item 152, per pupil services, per director's salary. And this is where you begin to see a lot of the mandates in these columns that have been placed in there. Anything, of course, you see that would be special education is generally a mandate. And anything you see, of course, in brackets indicates a negative expenditure, so, no, there is a variety of areas in here that we're saving money in the budget. Not major amounts of budget money so far, but money that you can see that we are indeed saving. On page 3 of 8, line item 746, per pupil ELE consultant program and services. That is, we need to have ELL, we need to have an ELL consultant, it's mandated by the state to address curriculum issues within the district. I know Judy, did you want to speak a little bit more to that?
The state is changing the requirements for, we're supposed to have a standalone curriculum for English language learners. And they're in the process of determining what direction the state will be going in, and then we will have to get on board with them. And so it's a fairly significant change, and so I did budget for some consultant fees to assist us in the process. And I'm thinking that that funding might also support some stipends for the two ELE teachers to do some of the work.
Tell me what line item we're on here.
Where it says pupil...
746?
Yeah, 746, pupil personnel ELE consultant program and services.
Oh, oh, oh.
She's already ahead of us by a page.
Okay, 1750, okay, gotcha.
Okay. Some of the increases you see are salary increases that are contractual, or maybe contractual, as well as things, longevity, some of these salaries, for example. Line item 170, longevity is figured into that, so some of these see a jump because of contractual increases. 662, principal translation, translated services. You see a major decrease in services there, $3,000 for translations, that's because the students will be going to Tohonto. So, I'm sure, you'll probably see an increase up at Tohonto, line item for that. It may not be the same, because it depends on... because it depends on what to translate, we may have somebody that's already doing that, I'm not sure yet, we haven't done the Tejantau budget yet, but Judy's going to get it done right away, so.
It's done, okay.
As fast as we can, yeah.
Have to.
Okay. And as you can see, under line item 185, teacher classroom, teacher salaries, you can see the increase there, that's according to the contract that was recently settled. Page four of eight. Once again, we have some salary increases behind, right at the top, 188 sped teacher salary, and speech-language therapy, those are all, once again, all contractual, and once again, here's one here that you can see, line item 666, the instructional coordinator sped, the team coordinator salary, as you can see, the variance up there is $16,232, that is mandated, and that was previously in the 240 grant, and has been moved from the 240 grant to a local expenditure, so that's one of the transitions that we were talking about before in my preamble to the committee. Line item 196, sped OT services, once again mandated, an increase of $2,859, those are all contractual services that are rendered through the Aspen Valley Collaborative for Student Services. These go up and down, these are the best, these are the numbers we have at this point in time, all this could change in special education, I mean, with a week to week. Line item 558, you have, excuse me, sped speech-language services, now here you see a decrease of $5,395, mandated, the services will no longer need it per the IEP, so this is just an indication to the committee, to the public at large, how these things can swing very, very difficult, I mean, right between these two here, you have almost $8,000 in swings between just two line items. The sub, the teacher salary, that's your short-term sub-line item, once again, that's a decrease of $4,000, and what we do is just, we look at just a running average over the last three years, I mean, this could go up, I mean, someone goes out and unfortunately is in a hospital for two months, or something happens, I mean, some of these things just are not predictable for both the short-term and the long-term sub areas, these are our best estimates, mathematically speaking, over a two, three-year period, is what we think it's going to be. Line item 209, paraprofessional tutor salary remedial, as you can see, that was previously funded under ed jobs, okay, so if we want to continue with that position, then we need to budget for it in the local budget, that's a decision that the school committee will have to make as we go through this budget process. 211, of course, is your tutoring services for regular ed, that's basically home and hospital tutoring, child isn't home and hospital tutoring, they're there for, I think it's 14 days, Judy, is that correct?
They're around for 14, or anticipated to be.
14 days, we have to provide that service if the physician fills out the appropriate forms, it could be 700, could be 7,000, I mean, once again, that's our best educated guess on past track record. Line item 207, paraprofessional tutor salary enrichment, once again, that's $3,830, that was previously in ed jobs, and now we want to continue that position, we would have to fund that, and if you want to fund it at that level of service. 205 is the sped instructional aids salary, that's an increase of $63,000, it is mandated, two positions, I think, from ABA techs, and one new position because of IEPs, do you want to?
Yes, actually, what that is, is previously, two positions were in the ABA tech salary line, but they were moved into the aid salary line, so they're not new positions at all, it's just reallocation from one line to another, and there is one new position per an IEP.
In fact, you can see that on the very next line, you'll see a deficit of, not deficit, variance of minus $55,463, right?
That's correct, yep, that's correct.
Kind of rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak, just switching line items there, but once again, just so you're trying to explain to what's happening here. Line item 2013, you have your ABA services, which is, shows a reduction of $8,000 due to those services are not required in that IEP at this point in time. All, this is just the volatility of the special education account, it just, it could go up and down very, 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 very quickly. The other ones, we have mandated provisions here, particularly for conferences for special education, that's something a little bit new this year, my understanding is, in the past, the in-services we've been offering for special educators, hadn't that really been germinated to their unique skill sets, and we really need to, under ed reform, give them something specific to meet their very unique needs. Did I say that right, Judy?
You did.
I did, okay, thank you, all right. So go on page five of eight, or are there other questions that the committee has? It's a lot in one item.
We're going in there.
Okay, page five. Top one, line item 231, that is a variance there of $1,900, that includes the $3,500 for curriculum coordination, as you know, we eliminated the full-time position of curriculum coordinator from the district last year, from all the districts, we really have no curriculum coordination at all, we are going to be trying a model, which we'll do a rationale for you later on, on trying to do this the most economical way we can, but to have some curriculum coordination in the district, so we're looking to allocate $3,500 for both elementary schools, and $4,500 for the high school to have some curriculum coordination that's going to occur, so the conversations can occur between the Boylston Elementary School, and Berlin Elementary School, and both those schools with the high school, so we're working on the same curriculum with the same goals, and same skill sets for those students, so we need to do something in that area to get those conversations going, and, you know, we're not going to go out and hire someone for $800,000 to do that, so we're going to try this model that the administrative team has come up with, but that's why you see that variance in that particular line item. 234, professional development conferences, an increase of $5,000, and I believe that's for the new literacy training, and to continue that here at the elementary school, Carol?
In a few years, we really, since the time that the Leslie initiative came into play, we really haven't done any more with the training for staff around literacy, a number of our teachers went last summer to a program called Daily Cafe, and Daily Five, which was started by two teachers, it's not a change from the Leslie collaborative that we've been working with, it really enhances that by learning the strategies around management of literacy time in the classroom, that the teachers who went found very beneficial, and we're really sort of piloting in our school and teaching other teachers, so I'd like the opportunity next year to send more teachers if they're interested in attending, or to send those people who have gone already, I think they have a new math piece of this as well, so I think it'd just be really beneficial, and I think it's important that our staff continues that kind of collegial approach to learning, to teaching.
Now, this is line item, that, or this?
234.
That's my thought, just wanted to make sure.
243, you have a minor increase of, well, not minor, but an increase of $737, that's a mandated line item, because that's for the Common Core standards, which are required to implement by the Department of Education. And you see some decreases that we have in math, $983 on the line 244, a number of other small increases and decreases, and some of these are mandated, the next major increase we have is under 274, and that's our library software maintenance, that went down, I'm sorry, that increased, that's a $1,000 reduction in that particular line item. That's line item 272.
Yeah.
Software maintenance in the library. The line item 277, other instructional materials, acquisition of equipment, that's for $917, that is for a laptop and a scanner for the school. Another major increase would be line item 287, instructional equipment, acquisition of equipment, music, there's been nothing budgeted for, from what we can see, for three years, and now you have a budget of $1,921, and that's for an increase in musical instruments for the elementary school. Another line item is 297, general supplies, as you can see, an increase here of $4,415, and believe it or not, that's almost totally allocated for ink cartridges, they've just gone through the roof. Am I correct on that, Ms. Bradley? Just, that's what it is.
It was also formerly in the tech budget, too.
Oh, you're correct, that's right.
It was also a change to with the budget line item.
Thank you. Page six of eight. As you can see, a lot of these are just mandates, contractual mandates for salaries, such as line item 307, the school psychologist salary, that's just, that's a contractual mandate, the nurse's salary under 314, contractual mandate, I'm just pointing out to the major increases that are contractual, which are obligated to fulfill. The major one down here is line item 330, transportation, special education, Aspen Valley, that's an increase of $13,000, which does cause us considerable fiscal pain, that's a mandate, as you know, that includes a 15 percent anticipated increase in transportation. I serve on that board, I know on the board of directors, Ms. Allen Court serves on the board, the operating committee, they are working to get that down, I know they may be going out to rebid that at this point in time, or look at another contractor, which we're looking at right now, that may have a, some interesting proposals for us for special education, but we need to really seriously research and investigate that out, not just in terms of whether they can provide the service, but can they provide it, people say they provide the service, but sure, that means they pick up the kid at 4:30 in the morning, and get him home at 8 o'clock at night, and we really need to take a look at the type of service that they're running, and check out their references fully, to fully vet this out fully, to make sure that they are indeed reputable, and they have a good reputation, and their references are all checked out on that, but we hope to reduce that, that line item, but that's what we're anticipating right now through the meeting I attended, which was last week, so this is fairly recent, very, very recent news, did you want to add anything to that, Judy?
No, I think they are doing a very thorough job examining all of their options, and I'm hopeful that we will not be looking at 15 percent increase, this is worst-case scenario, but we should have a determination, perhaps not until sometime in mid-January, but.
Yeah, just, I'll just, let me write that right now, another one that does, we have major concerns about to is line item 331, food services, other expense. 2010 was $165, 2011, $290.50, 2012, $15,000.
Budgeted.
Budgeted, yeah.
Budgeted.
Budgeted, and.
Key point.
So this is the cafeteria program.
This is your cafeteria.
Food service program, that's correct.
And we're, just let me fish the line item, okay, and then we have, so the requested budget is $19,000, which is an increase of $4,000.
From the budgeted amount, even, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about FY12, how that's going to end up. Now, to be perfectly honest with you, I have not had the time to do a comprehensive review of really, it needs to be all three districts, but right now, we're talking about Berlin, and the reason that we chose to budget the amount that we did in FY13, regardless of what you see budgeted in FY12, is because if you look back in the actuals for 2011, under food service, you'll see that they actually put in the general fund $18,990.11, so I said, why budget $15,000 again if we knew the year before? But keep in mind, though, when you were budgeting for FY12, it could not have been known at that time that it was going to be that much more in FY11 that had to be placed in the general fund.
Was that the year that we?
Because that was a year end, that would have been done at the year end.
Their service for a while, sure, well.
No.
It's been a long time ago. I know we did. So that's not the reason.
So, yeah, no, I was, yeah, I was, yeah, so when they budgeted it, for instance, in FY12, every time, if they have budgeted it, is you'll see, they budget it under other expenses, and what happens is, at year end, when they look at where food service actually stands, and believe me, I've worked with food service, my prior district, it was a big, big thing to, that I needed to work with, and they wouldn't have known where they needed to allocate it, so if you look in FY11 actual, you have towards the director's salary, $324.66, towards staff salary, $1,458.75, and towards foods purchases, $17,206.70, and through other expenses, $290.50.
So it's those four lines combined.
Right, and it was actually how it was actually applied.
It's those four lines combined.
Right.
That gives you the number of $18,990, so if you're looking to look at line item 331 for $290.50, and you say, what is Courtney talking about, she's not talking about that one line, it's those four together that make up the total sum of the cafeteria, so.
So I am concerned about FY12, too, obviously, you know, when I was preparing this budget, and looked at, and saw this trend here, because it may very well be that that $15,000 may not be adequate enough either, so I figured, well, we're budgeting for FY13 until I get a better handle on it, I suggest that we at least, you know, put in the 19 at this point for the preliminary budget.
But that's a concern, we have a major concern now.
Yeah, we've been concerned about the cafeteria budget for a couple of years now.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the numbers are starting to really roll in, getting to be fairly significant.
And we'll definitely have, for all three, you know, I will definitely have a night where we'll dedicate a good deal of time just talking about that issue.
Okay.
You know, and I've had a chance to really look deep into it.
Although line items on the page are mostly all contractual at this point in time, and on page seven of eight, at the top, line item 340, custodial services, custodial supplies, you'll see a major increase there of $1,600, that's because we need to have special cleaning solutions brought in for a student that's highly allergic, so we have to get special solutions to do that cleaning, and as you know, that's, actually, that's a mandate, too, I didn't even put that in there, but it is.
There's a few others here, besides the ones you've denoted, you know what I mean? That may be mandated also.
Yeah. Heating, 345, line item 345, heating of building, heating oil, fuel, I mean, this is what we talked about before, that indicates the major increase in $3.21 per gallon, based upon approximately 23,000 gallons in this of fuel that we're using, and that's where you get that major increase in that line item four for next year. Your phone bill, 347, is a major increase of $780, that does include, though, your AT&amp;T, your fire alarms, your elevators, your custodial, et cetera, so everything is rolled into that line. The next major one is line item 649, utilities, propane gas, once again, propane has gone up also, you see a major increase there of $1,756, I think that's $3.50 a gallon for propane for about $900 of propane gas. Maintenance of grounds and supplies, line item 536, is $2,000. Once again, in 10 and 11, we have no expenditures on that, and 12, $500, and why are we up $2,000 this year? I don't have any notes on that one, can you tell me why we have that, I may have to go on my back up and look it up. Okay, want to look that up? 362 is your rubbish removal, that's contractual, by contract. 372, maintenance of equipment to elevators, that's gone up a lot, you get $750 just in fees, testing, another $400, a battery which used to be replaced every so often is $1,400 right off the bat, so it gives you a major increase of $1,560 for next fiscal year.
And that's for an inspection, that's actually for an inspection that has to be done every five years, the last time it was done was in 2008, so 2013, we're due for that again, so we have a $650 fee that's due to the state, and then testing, so this is a little bit more.
And the last page, page eight of eight. And the last page, page, uh, eight of eight, um, this is where you'll see some fluctuation, a lot of fluctuation in the, in the special needs accounts. Uh, for example, this is where the tuitions, uh, were taken out of here and allocated to the grants. Hope you take a look at, for example, line item nine nine nine, tuition sped private schools, uh, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. We transferred that to the sped two forty account, uh, and that's where you see some, some major fluctuations, uh, in that, in that area.
I do have that.
Go ahead, Carol.
Bark mulch.
Good.
Two thousand five hundred in bark mulch for the two playgrounds.
Ah.
And it's, um, it's so high because it's a significant amount of bark mulch, but it's a special type of playground bark mulch. It's not the kind of spread around your shelves at home. It's a safe, it's safe, it's chemical.
There's no sticks in it, it's cut to a certain precise, yeah, make sure there's no chemicals in it, there's, yeah.
We probably didn't do it last year.
We did not.
Right.
Yeah, it just wears out.
And you have to at some point.
Well, we don't let the kids walk on it, it'd be all right.
We tried to make arrangements with the, with the town, too, because they do the work costs.
Right.
In the, in the public playgrounds.
Right.
So if we can get a deal to get enough to split that cost, we can do that. But that's what we're figuring.
And the type that you have to use, that would be a mandate of some kind, too, I would imagine. The type of bark mulch.
I could speak to that because at the Boleson Town, Special Town Meeting on Monday night, a bark mulch came up. Now, I'm not an expert on bark mulch, just by sitting in the audience, but yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's got to be approved by, I forgot what organization, yeah, somebody approves it.
Right.
So, yeah, yes.
Yes.
So you can see those swings that went from, uh, out of this account now into the sped two forty accounts. Big ones here is our item five three, line item five three eight, school revenues on the school choice. You see, last year, we had a hundred and fifty-three thousand, seventy-nine dollars that we applied to the budget. This year, we're projecting to apply two hundred thousand dollars, uh, to the, uh, to this, this particular budget. Uh, circuit breaker, we, we don't know, uh, we don't know where that is right now, nor any of the other numbers. So the, uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we actually, yes, circuit breaker, um, I think we handed out the sheet there. Um, actually, it's projected that we will have leftover, as far as, well, projected fund balance at the end of the year, ten thousand four fifty-three. But one, um, student did move, and, um, so we don't expect any revenue going forward, is that correct, Stephen?
That's Judy.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure. So that's another reason why we don't have anything there, we actually don't have anything coming, going forward.
So the mandates in the budget, uh, accounting for most of the major, majority mandates in the budget come up to a total of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, or twenty-nine point four six percent, almost twenty-nine and a half percent of the budget are just mandates beyond, uh, our control. The budget as it currently stands, without the application of any future, um, school, school choice funds, or, uh, or any cutbacks and reductions, eliminations of positions, stands at six point two two percent, uh, over, over last year. And, uh, and I've given you, I think, some other information on what the budget would look like, what percentage decreases should you decide to apply more school choice or begin to, uh, take a look at the elimination of, uh, of personnel, uh, and programs. But as of tonight, that's our first pass at, at this budget.
Any questions?
I have to give, uh, first of all, the entire administrative staff, all the administrators that came in, I mean, obviously, Carol, uh, Judy and I, and then, and Courtney, uh, spent a lot of time.
And Cheryl.
And, yes, thank you, thank you, Cheryl Sharon.
Cheryl did a lot of work.
A lot of work on the budget, uh, and I, I have to give special thanks to Courtney, who probably has whip marks on her back, because every time I went by, I said, "Did she do that budget yet?" Now I walk by and I talk about other budgets. Say, "Well, I was with the Boston budget." And then, of course, we're with the region budget, because those both were those to do next week, as, as, uh, as you may, may not know, probably don't know about the Boleson budget, but certainly the regional one is due next week, which is, uh, very complicated. We expected, uh, do the same exercise, uh, that we're doing tonight with tho, with those budgets. So, uh, we welcome questions that the committee may have, um, people from the public may have, or anyone that's listening regarding the budget. We glad that we're giving you more information as we go along. And at the next, you have, uh, the enrollment, our enrollments, we have the, the, uh, enrollment, the, uh, teacher, composition of the teachers. And I, and you have all the information on school choice and, and circuit breaker. But you've got, once again, major, major pieces of the budget that are missing, but this is where we are with it at this point in time. Understanding it's a work in progress and it's, it's preliminary, but this is where we are, and the major things that are impacting on the budget.
That was very clear, this is, this is very helpful, and it seems like you drilled down on things and corrected on some things like that, so we can see exactly how we're spending.
Mm-hmm.
I think Courtney, it's not a great, her first time around, just brand new budgets for her, and a whole new budgeting format. Uh, and I like to thank her for all the work that, uh, all the work that she did.
So are there any questions?
I was wondering, is the accounts payable receivable clerk a full year? I know it's night, it's part-time.
Oh, yes, I was anticipating a full year.
Full year? Okay, and then the other question I had is, you're saying that, um... That they're going to be investigating school choice accounts. Is that a different philosophy than what we've had in the past, in the sense that, um, do you understand what I'm?
Yep.
Is it a different, are we, should we be thinking of differently than we have in the past? Um, because I do feel that we've...
With the application of school choice.
Right, we've, we've been always said, you don't want to...
Have we been doing this correctly?
Well, let me, I'd be happy to explain, actually, where the, um, the information came from. And I actually understand, too, from my being on the town side, to be honest with you, finance director, and looking at the whole, the whole view of the overall town budget revenues and expenditures. But, um, it was Christine Lynch who actually brought it up at a meeting. Um, and as you know, she works for the, um, business services area and also on the regional, um, uh, area of, um, T E S E. And she did bring it up to basically state that they were definitely going to start beginning looking at districts, because the whole reason that the school choice revenue side is there is to support the educational cost of the students that, um, you are bringing into your district, okay? And, um, I believe to look at it, to explain it in a more holistic way, if you're looking at the budget in totality, meaning a town budget, um, and this is what she stated also, is that, um, towns are really starting to complain for those districts, and I'm not saying that we're one of them, but for those districts that are basically building up a war chest, because under Mass General Law, um, the assessment is on the town side. It comes in on the cherry sheet, yes, it's part of the overall municipal finance for the entire town, including the school department, all of the departments. But as you know, also, under, um, uh, Mass General Law, school choice revenue coming in goes directly to the school. And that has become problematic for, um, districts that are basically holding on to it. Nobody could really make them spend it, but they were holding on to it, building up, building up, building up. And to be perfectly honest with you, when districts, not this one here, or any of the three, when you are doing that, basically, to be perfectly honest, you know, their feeling is also that, um, taxpayers are being overtaxed because you have this revenue here you're not applying, and therefore, um, you know, or, or there could be unnecessary cuts, too, for that, for that reason. So they are definitely looking into it. And she did make that statement at a, at a recent meeting I went to.
I think also, there's just a lot more scrutiny in this area. As you know, you, you've read a lot of information about collaboratives recently, particularly, uh, a couple that were, uh, you know, the, the state has not really spent time looking at their financial, at those financial house. And I think, and as, as Courtney has said, I mean, you look at, you know, Mass Municipal Selectments Association, you know, they're raising the question, too, hey, because they're being charged school choice out of, on the municipal side, and we're getting the reimbursement, not the reimbursement, the allocations on our side. So there's a point there. I think it, it has to be, as I said, they'll look at things in terms of what's, seems to be reasonable, you know, seems to be reasonable.
So it's definitely a different perspective than we've probably had in our mind in the past. Not necessarily that I thought that we were building it up, but I do see the, um, the point that they're trying to make that if you're receiving the money for the children that are in the school building right now, you should be spending it on the children that are in the school building right now.
Hit the nail right on the head. That's absolutely correct.
Absolutely.
And you have, and you've done that.
Yeah.
And all three school districts have not carrying, you know, major funding.
We've had, actually, had to apply more school choice each year.
Mm-hmm.
To the budget in order to save the taxpayers.
Yes, that is correct. That's why we recommend increasing school choice also this year.
And, and I'm, oh, is that the line item right here? I just want to, you know, make that clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Um...
So you're...
In all?
That is your school choice line item.
Right.
Yeah.
So what's that balance?
In all.
The balance in the school choice account?
Or the proj?
Or the amount that you're, we're applying to the budget?
No, what's, after you apply it, what's the balance?
Well, that's a proj, well, it is a projection, too, because...
A projection.
Yeah, it's always a year behind.
On the projection through the end of FY two thousand and twelve is, um, three ninety-two, eight oh one. But they have been, um, applying, you know, for instance, this year, we've applied one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seventy-nine dollars. And also, though, I should also make it clear that in FY eleven, um, there were just thirteen, um, schools choice, this is a very good point, to your point. Um, there were thirteen school choice students, and FY twelve is twenty-four. Okay, so there's a recent, very large increase, so, too.
Yes, because it was twelve for the longest time, and now all of a sudden, it is twenty-four.
So that's another, yeah, part of that, so. Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, then that...
Which is good.
So the reason I'm bringing that up is because the revenue is, we're bringing in this year far more.
The amount of school choice applied to the budget.
So the expenditure should be far more, too, though, please. If revenue's going up, then the expenditure is...
It is, it's up another forty, forty-six. Forty-three, forty-six thousand? Am I right, the increase?
In...
It's about right.
Oh, no, I think he means expenditures for the cost of the students.
Well, there's two, I mean, you are correct, it's, in quick math, that's, that's about right, that has gone up.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, well, call it another fifty.
Right, well, yeah.
Surround that the number, it's another fifty, yeah. But that's something else the committee can, can take a look at.
That's a good, I'm glad we talked about that, because it sort of made me, it gets me nervous that, you know, we will, um, not be able to apply the same amount to the budget, but as we have been reminded tonight, that we do have additional school choice students in the building now, too, so.
And quite candidly, in a way, you actually need them.
Yeah.
In terms of just having appropriate class sizes, too small class sizes.
Right.
Just don't work out, I mean, uh, in terms of the relationship and the, that's being established in the classroom between the teacher and student.
Mm-hmm.
So is there any other questions?
I'd just like to have further discussion, not tonight, at some point, about the food services, though, and...
Certainly.
Oh, definitely.
So I can understand it better, and, okay, because I don't understand it very well.
Well, you have a very, just to be very brief, you have a very small population, two, a little over two hundred students. And you're preparing meals for, for two hundred students, and sometimes just personnel. The other thing, too, is a cutback in commodities in the federal government is nothing as what it used to be. It used to be, used to get huge commodities from the federal government, you could now get five hundred pounds of butter, a thousand pounds of peanut butter, and, I mean, just a lot of things you use just in cooking.
You can use the peanut butter and you can't use...
That's true, too, but, uh, yeah, yeah. I probably should stop this, I don't know much about cooking, so, just numbers.
Peanut allergies and high cholesterol.
But, uh, that is the budget, as you can see, it's, it's totally transparent, and, uh, any questions you have, please feel free to email us. But on the next go-around, we should be prepared to vote a budget, the board to, to the board of selectmen.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Um, are we moving on to the financial report? Or has that it? Do we have a report for the current fiscal year, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, we thought we'd just focus on the budget tonight, on the budget tonight, yeah.
And so, really...
But I do have the facility use, um, the update. You had asked me, I believe, it was over a month ago, um, at our last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think it had to do with the possibility of whether or not there was possibility of doing the gym floors or some other things.
If there was money to be, had to do the gym floor.
Right, so I did go back to, um, FY two thousand and eight, and then right to the current time, and kind of delineated all of the details. So you see the whole chronology of what's gone on, um, since then. But the beginning fund balance in FY two thousand and eight was three thousand seven twenty-three thirty-five. In FY two thousand and eight, there was revenue of one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, and expenditures in FY two thousand and eight for maintenance of building, maintenance of grounds, um, was four hundred and ninety dollars for maintenance of building. Maintenance of grounds was two thousand seven ninety-seven, which brought the ending balance at the end of two thousand and eight to only five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents. In FY two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and to date, two thousand and twelve, has been no revenue and no expenditures. The balance is still, to this day, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Now, is this the account that the fees go into?
Yes, this would be the account of the fees.
Should be going into.
Yes, and I have asked, and there are no, there is nothing, um, coming into that account.
So how can that be? I wasn't on the committee then, didn't, wasn't there set up fees to...
There were some, there was a donation, I think, a year or so ago, maybe, maybe two years ago.
Well, obviously, it used to be three years ago.
Well, but I think it was like a thousand dollar check. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
He came here and he...
Yeah.
He brought it to the meeting.
So what account did it go to?
I don't think it was here, though.
Yeah. He, he basically presented it to the school committee.
Yes, he presented it to the school committee, it was like a thousand dollar check. He had gathered it from, um, all of the groups that use the building. Remember that, Carol? Maybe you weren't here either.
Who, who had gathered it from all of the groups?
One of the, uh, guys who's...
From the rent committee?
Was the user, the basketball group.
I did hear something about a basketball group and some funds and it being used directly, but it didn't go through this account at all. It was just, it was, it came in and it was used specifically for, I believe, gym floors, but I do not have, you know, anything definitive on that. I just heard something about, um...
For two thousand and eight, though, there was, uh, was a directive that those fees being collected should, should go to the school committee for deposit in that account.
Well, that's the one thing that concerns me, is that in the policy, it's very specific.
Yep, it is.
Yes, that shell.
Forget where it is now, but...
I think, and that was confirmed in March two thousand and eight by the, by Joe Connolly, then superintendent of schools, that proceeds, that all proceeds, all voluntary proceeds would be presented to the school committee for the upkeep of the Berlin Memorial School. So I assume those proceeds would be presented to you, then those proceeds would be, would be deposited, I assume, into this account?
That, that would be, I mean, that's the account that's used.
That'd be the accepted, that'd be the accepted way.
That's the account that's used in every school or town, yeah, or town even, I mean...
Well, it said it once, as I looked through the information that we got by email for the meeting tonight. Um, it says it once in the policy itself, and then it does say it in the, on the, on the fee schedule. Each individual user group that has not assisted a rental charge will be encouraged to provide donations that will assist with the maintenance and upkeep of the facilities and grounds. And it's the responsibility of the applicant for the use of the building to see that the said donations are presented to the school department prior to the community's group's final scheduled use of the school facility each year. And the checks should be made payable to the town of Berlin School Department.
And how?
And then, Carol, and the building's actively being made use, yes. How many groups?
And we're not, we haven't, I remember that with the check coming that time, um, I'm, I'm thinking that it's been coming in the form of a light aid for, like, restoring the floor, gym floor and those types of, but I'm not sure where else. It's not coming to us directly, that's what I'm... It's not coming to the school, not getting a check there. But this is the policy, so I think the groups need to be notified that this is the way, you know, we need it to work. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, so now she would, um, I'm very familiar with facilities use policies, and actually, I oversaw all of that, especially in Southbridge. But normally, you're required to get an insurance certificate so that you don't have any liability or any problems with that. And I had a staff in my, in my office, although it could be in a facility, we don't have a facility director on that person, totally. But normally, um...
I saw the light bulb.
But, you know, you've got that coverage there, so you make sure, and we actually had scheduling and all that, and you would, you know, send out an invoice, and we would make sure that we actually had the fee upfront. But I was a little concerned when I, I heard someone say about hoping that someone else would collect it and bring it.
Yes, that's, no, no, and that's also been told to that particular person not to do that anymore.
Normally, what you do have is you have an application for facilities use, um, and they are required to fill it out, usually a superintendent. And a business manager has to, um, sign off... And a business manager has to, um, sign off on it if there is any, I'm just telling you what it usually is.
Right.
I haven't had a chance to really look at your policy yet, but, and if there's any, especially if it's, um, overtime hours and require a custodial, you usually go by the overtime rate for the custodial and that's all in the form. And usually you would give them a, a cost of what it would be, um, and, and get that check prior to their, their coming to use the facility, and certainly if something happened and went awry, they would give that reimbursed back to them if they did not, um, are taking use of the facility, but.
Yeah, the form of districts of it, and we, there was, we had a, a form that was developed, I mean, somebody wanted to use the gym floor, whatever it was, or any of the facilities, whatever they were. There's a, the school committee had a charge for those, and there was a form, the form was filled out by the person who went first, the building principal to see if it was available.
Yeah.
Okay, for scheduling, because the building principal doesn't know whether it's available or not. And then, uh, a fee was assigned, sometimes the fee, no fees were charged, so if the Boy Scouts wanted to use it, the school committee had waived the fee for Boy Scouts. I mean, but that's completely up to committee on what they wanted, what they wanted to do.
Yeah, there's a, there is a, a chart in-
Right.
That we've approved that-
And, and that's it, so it's filled out and then the check comes in and, uh, the check is deposited into the account and principal says, the okay is given to the central office of the principal saying we have receipts in hand, so proceed to let them use the facilities, whatever happens to be.
So.
So what is going on?
I don't know, you know, if something needs to be made clear to the users or-
Do we need to change something here?
Do we need to change the policy?
I think you just have to follow your policy. If that's what you want to do.
Well, I mean, it would be nice to be able to cover the costs of the use through the donations slash fees, which I don't really think there are anybody that's paying fees to use the building. No. But, um, I mean, it is clear that we, we hope they would give a donation, it's not a mandatory thing, but, um.
That would make it hard to send them the bill because it is a-
Right.
I think the issue is around the dependency on donations and then it's, it's hard to follow the procedure that was just outlined because there's no fees, that's voluntary.
It's suggested, it's not.
So, it's suggested it's not required, and I think if, if I recall, there was two or three years of discussion about this particular policy.
Two or three years, yes.
Oh, my God.
I'm not exaggerating, and this is what resulted, and I think you received the donations as the culmination of all of your hard work and efforts, but I'm, I'm not remembering subsequent donations, so I'm wondering if, if perhaps that's-
Well, you know, I did actually hear that a donation did come forth, I think, last year, but it went to recreation. Now, that might be something that I don't know whether the superintendent or someone should just give a call to recreation and find out if that is true or not.
Well, they need to, I mean, it, it's not just, uh, money, money, yeah, you got a liability, the liability issue is in that most of the groups are covered by a liability, uh, coverage, insurance coverage, like the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts have that kind of blanket coverage. Most, most organizations that are, and once again, I'm not familiar with the Berlin setup, so I'm saying, most organizations that are operating under the town auspices, like under Pox and Rex, has been sanctioned by the board of selectmen.
Right.
Those groups that are operating under Pox and Rex, it could be anything from youth basketball to, you know, peewee hockey, whatever happens to be, that generally they're covered up with the insurance umbrella of the, of the town.
Right.
For those activities.
I think that's actually what the groups are doing, they are sponsored by the town insurance.
Yeah, and any groups outside of that, I mean, obviously are not covered, so they have to demonstrate they have an insurance certificate or liability for that, not to be able to, to, to use that. And then, uh, and if there's no charges, like you have, I mean, you, your fee schedule's pretty specific, I mean, in terms of, of who's going to be charged what. And, uh, and it looks like you already have a lot of the areas here, particularly the gymnasium, is, is no charge for what they call category one. People which, you know, the third bullet says nonprofit organizations whose primary purpose to provide services to youth who reside in the town of Berlin. So, um, you know, it's pretty, pretty encompassing in terms of what, of what you have.
And another question I have, so we have, um, for services of the custodian on here as well, so if we don't have the money coming in that we know about, we'll see, has a custodian been working there after hours?
For the, for the, for example, some of the programs of the men's intramural, like basketball, he's there anyway, he's working
Okay.
in the school in the evening, where most of the occasions take place, activities, like he has a concert on Sunday, on Friday night, and he's there anyway.
Anyway, okay.
There are a few things that, that he opens up for on the weekend. And we try to work that around, some of the programs on Saturday, and we have volunteers who do handle the keys for that, to open up the courts.
So we're not paying custodian, time, okay.
And I, I don't need to, I'm, I'm hesitant to say anything at this point because I'm, Courtney's, we're talking, she's talking about something-
Yeah, we'll have to sit down and we'll-
She and I have to discuss, I think, first of all, before we go forward to
Right, right, we'll sit down and talk about it.
Yep.
these individuals and make clear specifically how this is.
Well, if nothing else, they should be basically, if nothing else, they should be, they should be going to use the building.
That's fine.
Principal, nothing else, just requesting to use the building, just so you can schedule it.
Oh, yeah.
And right, okay.
And it's all scheduled, that piece, it's, it's a donation.
Well, you know, maybe, I don't know.
Well, there's nothing in there, donations.
Tell me how you guys feel, but come back and, and let us know if there's something we need to do.
We need to, you can change some of the language from donation to-
If we need to make a suggestion of any kind, you know, we can put that on the agenda. Does that sound good?
Yes. Okay.
That's, that works. Easy enough. Our facilities director, Courtney Keating.
Uh, I got another place for her. Budget's done.
Well, maybe, you know, another month or two, we can-
Imagine that, so.
All right, so, well, thank you for that. The principals report, Carol, do you have anything for us?
Um, yes, in your packet, you have some information about PBIS, I also made copies for the audience, I want you to, should we get those out? And I'm also going to send down, I have enough, I wanted to send those down.
Oh, sure.
Copy of, those are not, these are matrices that are part of PBIS program, but those are not ours, it's just a sample of what they would look like.
Okay.
Um, since we, we, we began implementing this social curriculum at the beginning of the year, I just wanted to update you and let you know that we have met three times in an advisory committee of staff members that I have at the school. That consists of classroom teachers, special educators, a school psychologist, school nurse, and, um, we had Martha Wally come join us this last meeting. Martha was our trainer in the fall and she really is guiding us to our next step. We've already created a, a kind of a motto of BMS cares, and cares is a word for cooperation, attitude, positive attitude, respect, empathy, self-control. And the, my student council had come in and made signs, they're posted all over the school, they've named hallways, street signs, like Self Control Street and Empathy Avenue and just kind of, you know, just to, to kind of a visual reminder. So, we did get off the ground with it, the tough, uh, work that we're doing right now is through these matrices that we see because once we decided that these are the core values that we wanted to, to, to stick with, that we, that were the non-negotiables, we create a table of positive expectations and it's really changing a mindset so that we're not saying, don't run down the hall. It becomes walk quietly in the hallway, so it's even changing language around our expectations for children. We thought that, that when we started this, um, last Thursday with the matrix, that it would be a piece of cake and we would just stick things right in there. And it was such a fascinating discussion, our philosophical differences around behavioral expectations, you know, that's, how's that for a mouthful? But it really was, because when you come down to the nuts and bolts of it, what, what are we going to agree upon as the expectations that are for the whole school versus what happens in the classroom? And what Martha was telling us is it can look different in the classroom, I mean, if you have a certain set of rules and expectations for the classrooms, but what is it, you know, let's think about what it's going to look for the whole school when children go to the cafeteria and playground and recess time and all of those very public places, so we realized that this was going to move from probably a year project to, I'm anticipating a three-year project, um, truly, when we get done with all of it. But we're trying to be very thoughtful, um, with what we've put in here and, um, really, um, make it work for the students. I mean, I think that's the key piece, because you can get a lot of adults with their opinions on how things should run, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't impact the children in a way that they understand it and can articulate to us and show it by what they're doing in school, it, well, it's going to be a lot of words on paper. So, um, so we're moving slowly through it and I think that's probably a good thing. I, I did go to school council, I'm, I'm sharing this, this information with them, I met with them, we, we were snowed out for our, um, October meeting, but I did meet with them in November and I'm keeping that in mind of what we're doing along the way and getting their feedback. I will take it to link as we create these matrices, so I'll have a chance to talk with, with more of the parent community and then, um, as we move through this, meet with parents, I think it's a great opportunity to share in, in a curriculum night or, um, open house next year. Exactly what we're putting in place so that everybody buys into it and also not only the school community, but the public as well, but the community at large, so. So that, but just so, if you had, you know, wondering about it a little bit more, there's a website for PBIS and, um, it's been such a huge help. This is supporting this particular social curriculum, really saying this is the one that they would recommend, so we didn't plan that that way, but we were delighted to hear that, that we were, that we're on the right track, so.
Is that something that, um, I know you had the core values.
Mm-hmm.
Are you doing this in addition to?
They're actually the same core values, they're just in a, built in a way that, because it's an acronym of CARE, it seems to have a better way of remembering it. And in fact, one of the conversations, the initial conversations among the staff was taking those, the, the CAREs piece and explaining the values in the way that children, depending on their age level, would, would understand. So when we say, um, cooperation, what does that look like for a first grader versus what does it look for a sixth grader? So it's not, it's not the same language for everybody, but it means the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
So even that, you know, takes a little time to do.
Right.
We're also talking about ways we can, uh, uh, have positive celebrations in the school for, for recognizing, um, good behavior, positive behaviors in the, in the school. And, um, some great suggestions from my student council that we want to pursue and, um, so everybody's involved. It's, it's interesting, interesting undertaking, so. Um, the other piece I wanted to mention is that we finally did have Dr. Elizabeth Engler come last Friday and that was for all three districts. And we were over in Toronto and I, I've got really positive feedback from a number of staff members, I, I, other folks had as well, but they were delighted with her presentation, really spoke to the staff and just clarified a lot around what bullying is and what bullying isn't and the signs to look for and basically what bullying is versus, as she puts it, the category that falls under, just being mean. It's very interesting and how, how that word tends to get used or overused, but it really does have a definition, it's worth the points we look for and those, what we have to keep in mind when we use the word bullying, it's, it's a huge, you know, I, I thank everybody that we are not on Fox News each day at night when I call home, we're not. Because, you know, you just never know how things kind of get blown out of proportion at times, or if, not that there aren't issues, truly, there are bullying, but we need to keep things in perspective.
She focused also a lot on the area that is going to be increasingly more complex, and that is the area of cyberbullying. What people do on social networking mediums, uh, and a lot of times, things that are being done outside of the school's social networking mediums, outside, anything on school grounds that between individuals out there in cyberspace, so to speak, on Facebook and things like that, and sometimes I think it's an unreasonable expectation of that the schools are going to act as referees for what's going out on something that's not even connected with us, which really is a parental responsibility to take care of at that point in time, but that was another whole area that, that was brought up in terms of that kind of bullying, which is actually much more insidious than, than the typical bullies that we might think of, at least I would think of when I went to school, is someone wants to steal your lunch money. You know, it, it's, it could be much more psychologically damaging, so she spoke it with, uh, about that, it really, uh, and you know, promoting the, uh, the, the, uh, philosophy of inclusion, we hear that a lot in special education, but I think it also, creating a culture of sensibility, responsibility for people and including everybody in the, in the culture of, of the school, so I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was a very well, I thought, I was there for the whole thing and it went by. And sometimes they, it's like being in a dentist's chair if you get the wrong person, but this, but this one was, this was, this was excellent, it was just an excellent meeting.
It's good.
With the cyberbullying, I mean, this is-
Starting in grade three.
younger and younger.
Starting in grade three.
Does children have more access to technology, absolutely?
Twenty-eight percent of third graders in Comwell, Massachusetts have cell phones.
Wow.
So what is the responsibility of the school regarding cyberbullying if?
Well, it really depends whether it's occurring through using our, our mediums and our networks, so if it's occurring through our mediums and our networks, or actually in the sense of it's occurring on school grounds or in school days, we own a piece of that, I mean, we're responsible for some of that and we need to bring people together to, to mitigate that and, uh, including notifying the police department if we think that there's something threatening, uh, a point where someone's either life or their health or whatever it is could be threatened. And I mean, health in the most generic way that I can describe it, not just physical health, but psychologically, emotional well-being, so we have a responsibility to, to address that at, at that point in time. Sometimes I think parents, people are responsible for addressing something that happened at Hampton Beach in August, you know, between two people and texting each other on the beach, you know, we don't have a responsibility for those kinds of things, but but other things that occur that are school related, yeah, we have a responsibility to, uh, try and resolve that.
I can just add on to what Mike is saying too, as I understand, the mandate also is when something going on at home impacts the learning of the child at school because they're afraid to come to school or they're afraid to be in the classroom, certain children, so, so that's another, that is part of our responsibility as well.
But some of these statistics are just unbelievable.
Unbelievable. It was wonderful to have, I mean, it was not only teaching staff, but it was custodians there in, um, food service.
Cafeteria, yep, yeah.
Secretaries, it just, you know, everybody who, who, who meets with children, yeah.
And the Bush drivers have their own, own service too.
Excellent. So the last piece is just to remind everybody, you're welcome to come to our holiday concert on Friday at seven o'clock, and also, if you miss it on Friday at seven o'clock, you can see it again at, um, Mrs. Holiday Sing Along, which is Thursday, December twenty-second at one thirty, so stop by for my remarks.
We'll move on to the business items. We have a request for a paraprofessional.
I'll be fairly succinct on this because there are some issues here on confidentiality, but, uh, we may need to hire a, a paraprofessional to work with a student that has, uh, special needs. I don't know if this has happened yet, I think we're pending the signing of a, of an IEP. I don't know if the IEP has been signed yet, but we certainly didn't want to alert to the committee to this because this would be a new position, and as you know, as part of the budget policy, you are required to approve new positions, in this case, if it wa, if it was recommended by the team, of course, we'd be mandated to, to, to provide it, but want to make the committee aware of it. Uh, you do have the, uh, memo in your packet from, uh, Ms. Bradley and, uh, Ms. Fallon Court on this, uh, on what the cost. But we, the, the position, I think we had accommodated through internal transfers of funds, as you can see here, from four thousand speech and language services and another sixty-three hundred and thirty dollars from a paraprofessional ABA tech salary and another seven hundred and forty-two dollars from paraprofessional ABA, uh, services, so, um, has this come to fruition? It has come to fruition, okay, well, good, well, it's just, okay, so it has come to fruition, and this, as you can see, was also projected in the next year's budget also, so we would like your permission to hire, hire that person.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion to hire this paraprofessional as recommended?
So moved.
Okay, is there anything else, questions, anything else to be said? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Sorry, we'll get to the next agenda item. After we met the school building committee meeting last night.
Good, aren't we? I think this one's good for Berlin, isn't it? Just so you know, this week at the building committee.
They changed their dates, are you kidding me?
But I don't think it will affect anything.
How can that be?
Let's not go that far yet.
No, just, just a heads up. We are not going to talk about that tonight, though.
No, Courtney and I did protest to our utmost ability, not changing.
And we, I guess we didn't know that they weren't set in stone for the rest of the whole year, but apparently they weren't.
So I give up now. I give up.
But anyway, so Berlin, we are sort of scheduled for the second, is it the second Wednesday?
You are.
On a pretty much regular basis here through the rest of the year.
January eleventh is your next, your next meeting.
Right.
And, yep, and we definitely need to meet on January eleventh, because that's the budget, we need to vote that budget through.
I think, you know.
A budget through.
Unless anybody has any objections, we could probably, I don't know if you want us to vote to approve this, or just agree that we're good for the Berlin meetings for the rest of the year?
I would, that's what I would do, and you can always adjust it as you go along.
Okay. So does this sound doable? I don't think we're going to need any of those particular dates for the region if we're moving to the third Thursdays, or something after January?
Not, that's what I have in my budget. Watch my books.
In your budget? You're budgeting days now.
I'm tired, I'm tired.
I did.
See what I have on my mind?
I'm not going to be able to do the sixteenth, because.
Okay, is that a Thursday?
It was just scheduled, I mean, it was supposed to be November thirtieth, and then they canceled it and rescheduled it as well. Yet again, we'll have to figure something else out.
Okay, but is this the sixteenth, is that a Thursday?
I think so.
Okay. Well, I'm sure in a one-to-one, I mean.
It should be fun.
We can figure it out. But as far as I know, the rest of those dates are going to be okay for Berlin?
From what I can see on my book, they are.
Okay. So should we take a chance and approve those dates for our Berlin school committee meetings? Okay. They get, they're going to be on the second Wednesdays of the month, so.
January eleventh and February eighth.
And then this will probably get posted if we vote it for the, by the town clerk.
Yes, we could do that.
Sometimes she'll stick it up on the bulletin board, so we know ahead of time.
Ah, okay.
But you'd have to take the others off there.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's just cut and paste.
Okay. All right.
Do we usually go this far into the year, being town meeting is somewhere in here?
You should tell me the first week in May, what night does Berlin normally hold it on, first Monday?
First Monday in May.
In May, that would be May seven, or is it?
I'm just curious.
That'd be May.
I think we have given, at the beginning of the school year, we usually give a list of dates, tentative dates, through the whole school year.
May seven.
Through the end of the school year. Okay. Just a question.
It'd be May seven anyhow, if it was the first Monday in May.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion to approve the January eleventh through the June thirteenth dates for the Berlin School Committee?
Second.
Nothing else to be said. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So unless something comes up, we're good, which could happen. All right. So, and, let's see here, public school, public or school committee comments, are there any? Future agenda items, budget, budget, budget.
Facility use fee update.
And at some point, I think, maybe we asked for a food services report, and I'm sure we will have at some point. And, yeah, that's about all I had. Okay, we do have need for an executive session, hopefully a quick one, for the reason of strategy with respect to litigation. So, I need a roll call vote, to go, well, first we need a motion to go into executive session for that particular reason.
Second.
And a roll call vote, Ruth?
Aye.
Chris, aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Two to one.
So can you force me to go?
Can't force you to go.
To what?
To the executive session.